You ready to say, the clerk?
Okay, and it's April 5th, and I call this meeting to order. It is exactly 6:30 PM. And the roll call is Mayor Protan Villalobos.
Here.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Volker.
Here.
Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
And Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Gleis. If you would all rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And then please remain standing for the invocation. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we just thank you for this beautiful city and for your guidance. And we just pray that you continue to guide us in all of our thoughts and actions. And we just pray that this will continue for a long time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, are there any public comments?
Yes.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
You're up first.
I'm up. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Schultz, as you might know. And, uh, can I put you on?
I know what you mean.
Yeah, don't want you, but here you are. Last week, uh, we talked about a, uh, commercial property and a personal property. Being required fenced like a car department. And I was wondering if, you know, the council people said that you're, look into that. And I was wondering what they discovered about that. Also, according to the code 114-02, it states, uh, there should be concrete underneath those food wagons. And I was wondering if that's going to be the case, or they're going to waive that, or what the deal is. I don't know. And, uh, and then also, I noticed it in code 114. It said that, uh, the city manager is going to periodically check for sanitation on the food court. And I thought, you know, he's pretty busy as it is. One day a week, he's here. That's kind of interesting how that might get accomplished. But anyways, those are some things I wanted to ask you all.
Was that 114, you said?
Yeah, 114. Uh, I don't know if it's -02. I think it's a city corridor. Uh, talked about it. Got by our city manager checking on the sanitary phisms of the situation periodically. And according to the code, I thought it was kind of interesting because he's pretty busy as he is.
Well, we're not trying to be rude, but during public comments, we're not allowed to comment. But if you want to talk to us afterwards, we can do that. After the meeting.
Okay.
We'll be happy to.
Those are three items that I was interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Beth Harper?
Hey, welcome back.
Welcome back.
You've been at senior a while.
Last month. Okay, two items. First one, maybe for the river advisory group, but also y'all need to be aware of this. Uh, there was major tree clearing, like a big excavator down in the ditch on the bank of the, we call it Snake Creek. Uh, somebody else calls it Wolf Creek. It's true, it's Snake Creek. And it's a major tributary in San Marcos River. It's just right upstream of city limits. Uh, and it's near the construction site of that stupid loop going through. Uh, but anyway, it's in the Martindale ETJ, and it's just right upstream from the city. And so I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. Uh, and I don't know if TCEQ needs to be notified, but I did not see any. Of course, it hadn't rained, so we shouldn't be worried about drainage right now. But it should be one these days. Okay, another item. Okay, today, 4:30, right down here in Martindale. Um, the River Road, Northwest River Road was closed off. Uh, 1984 was closed off. Highway 80 was closed off. All four lanes, just 4:30 in the afternoon. If I don't know anything about traffic, it's, that's bad. That's rush hour. Um, there was some, something happened. I came upon it as everything was clearing up and everybody started moving. But anyway, there, um, it is located in the Martindale city limits. There's a little sliver there, and it's in Martindale ETJ. But this is where all three roads were blocked. And the only law enforcement person was one DPS vehicle that was there. He was doing all the work. And I know that y'all got, Mr. Ward was supposed to be the law enforcement person. Did not see him at all. Just wanted y'all to be aware of that.
Okay, um, so we'll move on to reports. I did want to make a comment about fundraiser on Sunday. The fire department, I know it's not the city, but I know a lot of people were there. Um, they were highly wildly successful. They started out wanting to make $2,000. Then they thought, well, maybe we'll make five. They made 10.
Excellent.
So they are very ecstatic. And we wanted to thank the community. Everybody was incredibly generous. And so, uh, the fire department really does thank you. Um, for city news, well, for library news, April 9th, on this coming Saturday is kite day. Um, we've been mowing the park and trying to get it ready and everything. So it's really, I know it was fun last year. Do you want to say anything about the kite day? Are you involved with it this year?
No, not this year, just with the, uh, just with the first one. The library has taken it over and they're putting it on. But thank you to the library. I think it was, you know, in a time of like COVID, and it seemed like there could be nothing, you know, could be done. It was outdoors, you're able to be with your family. And it wasn't, there was not only kids flying kites, but it's like for adults too. It could be for any age, so, um, that's amazing. We had a bunch of families, so thank you.
And we have some surprises.
You have surprises.
All right.
Okay, that sounds cool. Um, so we didn't have to hold an election because all three of our candidates are unopposed. Uh, Mike McClabb, Sonia, and then Nick Styler will be coming on May 10th. Um, and so we're going to move our city council meeting from the 3rd to the 10th. Um, because the election is actually just Saturday before the 10th. So we can't do the legal things we have to do with the election until the 10th. And then we can also swear all three of those members in for the next term. So the meetings in May will be the 10th and the 17th. Um, and then people are already asking me, when is the parade going to be? Um, so July 2nd is a Saturday, so the fourth falls on Monday. And so we're going to have the parade on Saturday, July 2nd. Okay, and that's all I have to report.
Can I mention something?
Yes.
Going on?
Yeah.
Uh, the silo cell is Sunday, just to let y'all know.
The second Sundays? Second Sunday.
Yeah, wait, is this Sunday, right?
And then, uh, just to add on that, um, like our, it's been, it's been, you know, like the turnout has been very well. That Mac's House has changed their days to now change it to the second weekends of the month instead of the third. So just to kind of like, you know, build on that community and help, helping one another out.
It's been great. It's really been popular. So thank you for that.
Oh, yeah.
It's good. Okay, so we'll go on to city administration.
A couple things. First one, there's an upcoming, uh, public meeting regarding a TCEQ wastewater permit application that's connected to the Cotton Center Walton Development. Um, that's, to our knowledge, it's still scheduled for April 11th at 7:00 PM, I believe. Um, we'll publish that on our city website. Members of the community who aren't unable to attend online from their homes are welcome to come to City Hall and participate in that hearing here.
So it's a Zoom thing?
Yes, I think it's technically go-to meeting, but it's like a Zoom.
Oh, but it's going to be here?
We will make it available here as best as we can for those who can't participate from home. Now, space is limited here, and I know that, um, we've been advised to try to boost the number. So if you want to participate, if members of the community want to participate from, from home, you certainly can't. You do not have to come here to participate in that.
Um, yes, I had a question about that. So we'll be listening to the meeting, but then comments can be made from the public or the city council? Or is it muted, or do you?
It's, I believe there's, there's an opportunity for public comments to be made, um, during that hearing. So it is best, if, if there is a significant concern about a specific issue, that members of the community take advantage of the ability to submit their comments in writing prior to the meeting. At the close of that meeting, it is likely when they're going to shut off the commenting period. So if you're, you know, unexpectedly unable to attend, or if there's something that you really care about, want to have included as part of TCEQ's consideration, I strongly recommend that those individuals submit a written, um, comment. And that information on how to do that's available here at City Hall if someone has questions, or they can contact us or send me an email, or want to talk to somebody on city staff, planning zoning commission members, or what have you. I'm sure we have, there's plant outlets. But if you want to know how to submit a comment, ask somebody that probably knows somebody who knows how to do it.
So, okay, I mean, not to drag it out, but then would you submit a comment? Or could the public speak on, during the Zoom meeting at the same time? Do they want a paper copy and then they'll talk, or?
They should be allowed to speak during that, and that will be considered part of the record.
Yes.
I would encourage those who want to speak to also submit a written comment if they're, if that's available to them.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, thank you.
Hey, real quick, is that going to be a regular scheduled city council meeting?
What we'll probably do is publish a notice of possible quorum and then make it available. I don't, I don't think we'll have a city council meeting over the top of that.
Are you, are you going to attend?
My intention is to do so, yeah.
Can I ask, ask you about quorums? I mean, with four of us, that's...
As long as we publish a possibility that a quorum will take place, and with the dates, locations, times, that satisfies our needs under an open meeting sign.
So with four of us in the city council, if three of us are here, is that still a quorum?
So, it, you can all be here. Once, once the notice of quorum is posted stating where you'll, where the council may likely all be, or may likely be, and when they'll be there. I mean, if you, if you wanted to post a notice of quorum saying we'll all be at Mike's house on Saturday night, you could do that. You just got to give the notice.
Okay. No, I just, I just wanted clarification since there's, we do city council now. What defines a quorum?
A quorum is still defined by the total number that there could be. So a quorum is three, and then for a special meeting, it's got to be all of the remaining council members.
Okay, thank you.
And related, myself, the mayor, and council member McClabb met with the executive director of the San Marcos River Foundation, SMRF, um, and discussed what their concerns were. And, um, so we had some coordination on, uh, understanding what their concerns are, what, where the city should, might need to consider looking at for our comments. And that was, that was a fruitful meeting. We also discussed other items related to environmental concerns regarding the river. So that was a good meeting to have. Hiring, we have, as, as city council knows, previous city council actions, hired our building official and our zoning administrator slash economic development coordinator. They have both started. They're doing fabulous work so far. Greatly impressed with both of them. Um, Lee Rust, he is our building official, grabbed that bull by the horns and is making improvements already. And Lisa's working a number of projects regarding development agreement, short-term rentals and other things. And so we're good on that path. Um, we're also looking to, to hire and accommodate, um, using our city staff, one of our municipal clerks, court clerks, helping us out on the utility desk and looking at possible additional hires there as we go to a five-day work week, which begins this week. So if those who want to come in to pay their bill on a Friday, you should have the opportunity to do so.
We'll change the website to say that.
Yeah. Um, also held a meeting with our grant administrator and our engineer regarding our hazard mitigation grant that's doing a lot, a large project between Lockhart Street, Quail Run along Northwest River Road. That's proceeding. Um, surveys have been done, are continuing to take place. Members of the community, if you have not submitted a right-of-entry form and you are within that project area, I encourage you to do so. That way we can expedite this process. Um, all it, all it does is provide the permission to the surveyors to step on your lawn so they can line up their sites and make sure they understand where the project area is. Um, and that way we're able to proceed with the rest of the planning. The, I don't know, one of the concerns there was the environmentals. I met with, a part of that monthly meeting included the environmental consultant. Um, and she's taking steps forward on preparing those reports relating to the cemetery and others. So things are progressing. Um, invoices are being processed and work is, is continuing on that front. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to the financial report.
Okay, so this is the, uh, financial report. See here, the bank balances as of today. Uh, you see the general fund at 45377, the street and road funds, 5564. And on down the road, down the road, court restricted, police restricted, utilities, um, community development. Total in the bank, uh, in Lockhart, $106,000. Going down, you see the, uh, tax pool investment funds. The emergency fund is at 222,000, 295. The Public Funds Investment Act, all of these little sub-totals here, total $541,000 in that account. Uh, Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, $95,090. And due to comptroller for the fines, it's down to 320 now. Um, any questions on the bank balances, um, as of today? Okay, the next...
Wait, I had, can, can you back up from grant funds a little? Uh, what was this, 60 quarterly court? Oh, that's the court, dude.
Yeah, I guess I should get that out of there. You know, I think when I first started, uh, over three years ago now, there was money in there. But we've got another account for the court money that I use at Lockhart Bank instead of that one. Um, perhaps it was being used to keep the balance below a maximum amount. But, uh, yeah, that's...
I first confused that with the comptroller, the money we're paying to the comptroller.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
That'd be nice, wouldn't it?
That's a small one.
You might write the check. All right, the next one should be the general fund budget report here. Uh, this report is through February. Um, roughly 40% through the year. You see the property tax revenue, 92% collected. Looks like we've only got about 29,000 left as of the end of February. So those monies are coming in well. Uh, and then you see, uh, municipal court revenue, franchise fees, uh, right on track. So those permit fees, sales tax revenue is, uh, is strong. So, uh, income looks good. Uh, you see the personnel section there. Uh, every line item there is below budget except workers' comp. And that's because that is, uh, front paid. It's not that we've had expense, it's just the insurance is paid ahead. Um, that little credit you see there is, uh, that $12,000 credit, that's money that comes from the utility fund to reimburse for, uh, the clerk's payroll up there. Uh, operating expenses, total 26879, 32% of budget. The only ones that look over, software expense and maybe travel. So there's been a fair amount of travel related to the, uh, police chief interviews, uh, that we've spent, uh, this year.
Uh, 65, the property liability insurance, 5,000. Is that like a quarterly payment?
It is paid quarterly, and one of them was just posted. So, uh, so yeah, that's another one of those that's paid upfront. You prepay for insurance and then it burns off. So, um...
So it's 9,000 a year, or is that the budget?
That's, uh...
So we're halfway through.
Yeah, okay. Um, and it may actually, you know, it's audited at the end of the year, and there's a chance that if our revenues are up, that the premium could be up. That's what they base it on. So, um, then you also see another credit here, 6999 overhead reimbursement from utility. That's where they pay their share of the overhead of this building, um, including oversight by Jared and me and others have worked into that.
Office supplies posted.
Office supplies. So, um, anyway, we prove that number out about once a year. And the last time we did it was, uh, pretty accurate. Uh, other expenses, miscellaneous expenses, that's more. Uh, expenses have been going in there related to the police chief search. Um, then you see, uh, court restricted tech expenses. Maybe I shouldn't have used that line. I see there's no budget there, but I've been transferring money from the, um, the court's got some designated money for software. And I've been transferring money from that to cover their software, and it's, uh, you know, expenses.
740, 740.
It probably would come out of the, uh, special funds. Special revenue fund.
All right, I'll look over there and see. I should be moving some money over from there, I guess, as well. And otherwise, contracted services. Once again, if we're looking at 40% through the year, audit fees, the audit is done beginning of year. That's why that's 93%. Engineering, I guess we spent the whole, whole budget already on that one. Uh, IT is a little head of plan. And, uh, otherwise, the other lines look okay. Professional fees.
At what percentage should we be in?
41, I think. Whatever, what is this, seven, seven-twelves? Do that math, and that's, that's where, that's where we should be. Uh, on down through property maintenance, all in all, the contract services are 52% of budget, which is higher than, um, than 40%. But, um, I mentioned the audit is prepaid. Uh, you see the library line there. We paid, uh, that, uh, one of the two payments there, which makes that line, I don't want to peer over, but that's, that's exactly right. Anyway, income over expenses, you see it $213,000 so far year-to-date against a balanced budget. You see it zero there. So, um, yeah, that's where we are operationally in the general fund. Any questions on that report? All right, the next, uh, page is That comptroller, public accountant, that's quarterly payment for the traffic fines. That only shows up once a quarter. The, uh, that law office payment there, Floyd Akers, that was related to the former police chief mediation. Anything else looks out of the ordinary there to me? You know, I'm having questions.
I'm wondering for the Ricks lock. Did we have other changes?
Uh, the $600 was for a new safe.
Okay.
And the $137, is that the what? You had the court door. Oh, this door. We had to get this door rekeyed, and then also, um, we got the little bulletin board at the post office rekeyed.
It's under glass.
You don't have to ask every time.
Yeah, they let us, uh, have access since we, uh, since they couldn't get in anymore, I guess. We agreed to rekey it. Uh, here's a special revenue fund. You see here, street and road tax, hotel tax, all various little things that are not necessarily operating revenues. Um, and we're at 21,465, 45% of the budget. Uh, so that, those funds are, looks like they're coming in at the right clip. And I think we'll see, we've not skinned a penny of them as we look down at the expenses. But it looks like street and road, maybe I should update some of that, move some of that over from the general fund.
Did we spend something on your books, Alex?
No.
Well, at one time we did, but we voided it. We were going to sponsor a chili cook-off or something.
I hired, of course, like almost in the, over 20,000, 30,000.
Well, it's, on the first page, it, the accumulated number is like 48,000.
Oh, okay.
50,000.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, this is just this year-to-date that's come in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, utility fund. Uh, you see, uh, year-to-date, 133,565 in, uh, various incomes. You see 41.7, that's right on, right on track. And expenses at 40.9, uh, those right on track in the total. And, uh, you get to the bottom, I think we've got a positive income over expense. So the utility fund is cash flowing itself as well. And then here are payments out of that fund. Guess that is it. No surprises. Good on this month, I think.
So next, we have our, our new city clerk. Would like to do a, a presentation on how to do our minutes.
Oh, okay. So, oh, do you want to do that now, or do it under the session action?
Um, well, he was going to give the report now, and then we go on it later?
Yeah, that works. If there's any discussion on it, uh, on what, on what he's presenting, that would have to be later in the agenda. It's only, is only issue.
Should we move it then?
I would consider doing that, yeah.
So we'll move that for a little bit later. Let's move on to the police report. Judge, who's calling?
Yeah, I'm not seeing him.
All right, we're ready for the police report.
Boo, thank y'all so much. Uh, so we had, uh, last month, in the month of March, we had 58 violations written. Uh, I've been working with code enforcement officer and getting together on how him and I are going to enforce the code violations, what he's doing versus what I'm doing. So him and I have been talking and discussing how that's going to happen. And I just want to answer a question about the fatality investigation. And I just want to answer a question about the fatality investigation accident that happened yesterday morning out here on Highway 80, 142. So there was a fatality accident, the bicyclist that usually rides around out there got struck by a vehicle and the highway patrol worked that. I contacted highway patrol sergeant right off the bat when they called me and asked them to have the expertise in fatality accidents and pedestrians and highway patrol came and worked that.
I, I did want to make a comment about it. Gabriel Zunica loaned his bicycle to this man so that he could ride home the night before. So the man killed was not Gabriel. And some, some people have called City Hall asking about that. I don't know the name of the man who did pass away, but it wasn't Gabriel Zunica. I just wanted to say that.
Was that accident, was it daylight?
It was dark, it was dark.
Early morning?
Yes.
Crossing the highway or was he just on the front edge?
He was on the side of the road.
Oh, he's on the road.
No, I think the car was still there.
They said they're.
Yeah, I guess everybody knows with that light, if it's green, you wait 30 seconds or whatever, you look.
Well, it wasn't at the light, it was under the.
You don't correct what's made of the seat.
No, no, I don't believe so. I mean, it's, I don't think, right now it's early, they're gonna put it all together, reconstruct the whole scene.
I've been asked that there was a video that showed that the driver was not at fault? Can you answer that?
They did not tell me that, highway patrol didn't tell me that.
Okay.
They had the, they had the tools, they have the total station and everything else that can come out and plot that. We don't have that, that's a $25,000 instrument, you know, just to use.
Real quick, so he was, it wasn't hit crossing the eighty, he was on this, he was on the.
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
It's very sad.
Yes, it is.
Really sad, sure.
I think there was a request from the community to take the video off of the Martindale Community Facebook page because someone said, you know, you shouldn't be showing this and I think it has since been removed, so.
Oh, is it a video after the fact? Is it a video after the fact or is it?
Yes, it was after the fact, someone drove by and he could see.
Yeah, it's not an actual video, it's an actual.
It was just the bicycle, well, the bicycle.
Those accidents, someone took it down, they took it down.
Yes.
And then, so I, I just have a question because I would like to know, since it happened, I know that you said that the DPS worked the case, I'm sure that Caldwell County was there as well on the scene. Did they call you to the scene or?
They did, they called me at 7:09.
And you were, you were able to respond?
I did not respond because highway patrol said they were on coverage and worked that. I'd worked the night, the night before.
Yeah.
All, all my work.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the court report if Judge Fusco is on. Oh, he's in town.
He's what?
He's in the building. Thank you, Judge.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Great, good.
Okay, we have got the report, you'll see the numbers in front of you as far as our quarterly estimate and then our, our numbers as compared to last year. And I was just speaking with Mr. Moore and we may have, there may be an issue with COPSync because he's got some different numbers than I do as far as citations. So just, and we just, we're just talking about that, so we're gonna obviously look into that. But there's nothing extraordinary or unusual about it. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best.
Are you gonna give us both numbers, your, your numbers and his?
Oh, his numbers, my numbers were lower. Lower than what COPSync was, what he had reported to COPSync by about. Oh, I don't know, by about 20%. Yeah, so it's a significant discrepancy.
It is a discrepancy.
Yes, yes, we're gonna find out why and, and I ran my report several times and he's anyway.
But y'all communication with him?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're in constant communication. We'll figure it out, we're gonna, yeah, we're looking forward to working with him.
Okay.
But if anybody has any questions or anything, I'll be happy to try and answer.
I had a question, if someone comes in and pays a ticket fine or it became a warrant, I don't know, do you accept payment, multiple forms of payment, check, credit card, cash? I mean, do you have the ability to transact credit cards?
Oh, sure, that's our main form of payment, we don't take cash.
You don't take cash?
No.
Even if someone walks in with cash?
Yeah, we would send them to go get a money order or something. We don't want people, we don't, for obvious reasons. Yeah, no, just for security purposes.
Oh, yeah.
You don't want to make, we, we don't want people under the impression that we take cash. Cash, and we don't, it's just nobody, I mean, who cares cashing? It's just easier and it happens very rarely. And you know, every now and then we'll say, yeah, you can go down there and get a cashier's check and they always come right back. So it's, it's kind of an obvious, but yeah, that's, that's what we do. We take everything but cash. Okay, thank you.
I know Letty has sent out a number of postcards for warrants and so she's been clearing up a lot of that. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, that, it's, it's been trickling in. I mean, it's not having the official warrant roundup, we're kind of like on our own and, and you know, it's, it makes all the difference in the world when you have the nightly news in Austin saying, yeah, we're coming to you. Explaining what happens to people that neglect certain matters. And, and you know, and so that's, that's a big difference. But they have been coming in and she's working very hard and she's sending out cards, she's sending out letters. We're actively pursuing that right now and we're maybe gonna be talking to a third party about some assistance in that for collection, but it's being everything that, that we can do and some, and we're talking a lot about it because we, you know, quite frankly, we just, we've got some cases we just need cleared up. But we are working our hardest on it.
Thank you. Was there any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna be back here and y'all get ready for the swearing-in, just yell at me, okay?
Okay. Should be shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have planning and zoning reports?
No, no, but there's a lot of things in the works, so it's ongoing. I've been, I've been in communication with the police and there's a lot of things coming up, but nothing to bring in front of the council at this moment. It'll all come at once.
I think you ought to talk about what you're working on.
There's several things we talked about, I mean, the Taco Feliz. There's nothing, nothing, it's a process.
But that would be okay just to kind of listen to things that you're.
Well, we got Taco Feliz.
Or at least tell me.
I can, you can tell you later, we'll talk to you right.
We'll do it later.
But also we have, you know, the owner from Taco Feliz who's here. Will it be on the?
That's been reached out and there's been communication.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what's crossed the board, just checking up on it.
I was told you were gonna send some photographs and of your existing building that you have in San Marcos. It's gonna be a similar design, what you're gonna do here.
Yeah, I was checking up. I was, a platform.
Likely either a variance or a zoning change request. And the applications in, in review, I know our zoning administrators discussed it with our planning and zoning chair and they're making plans to have that presented at a future planning and zoning meeting. Should be in short order, so.
Did you get, did you get the photographs of your building?
Yes.
Is that gonna be similar to what you propose or on your design?
I'm trying to make it a little better, but yeah, something close.
That would be good to do if you get that, get that too.
So that's all you guys need, I just took.
Well, we'll give you, yeah, I think we'll take that conversation offline on getting that application completed and then brought to council.
I just wanted to make, just to, you know, respectfully, just let them know, so they'll get in touch with you.
Okay, anybody from the historic commission? Okay, the Martindale San Marcos River Advisory Committee, we have her report here.
She's here.
And Joy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, I don't have anything further shattering to report. Our work group is continuing to go over floodway and floodplain regulations on both Martindale and other flood from, from communities. We're working on compiling an information packet for Riverside landowners.
Oh, cool.
And that would, you know, cover stuff like how to prevent erosion or what kind of native plants best grow in the ground and how to keep the beavers should eat in your saplings. Let's see, we are organizing an earthquake weekend river cleanup to coincide with the city's, citywide cleanup on April 23rd. We will have volunteer cleanup and necessary items, gloves, hand sanitizers, bags, et cetera. We'll start morning, light up the teams and then reconvene 11:30 to noonish. And we still have to decide where we're gonna reconvene, either at Allen Bay's Park or possibly the courtyard across from City Hall. But we don't want to interfere with anything that the cafe might have on. As of today at 6:00 PM, the public meeting with TCEQ to discuss the Walton Development wastewater discharge tournament is still scheduled for April 11, 7:00 PM. There is, for anybody that can't make it, there is a link and I'm happy to get that to you when I get home to submit online comments.
Okay.
Ahead of time or during the meeting.
If we could get that link, we'll put it on the city website.
Okay, I actually have it here. I'll just give it to April.
Okay.
Matthew McGovern has submitted his application to join the river advisory committee. We're happy about that. This will of course necessitate changes in our membership and/or officers and we will update you with that information as well.
Believe on that issue, council appoints members, so whatever the recommendation.
So there is a change when we, at the next meeting.
And then I neglected to post here that Matthew's wife, Boreen Chelma, has been very active in seeking options to deal with the trash on Highway 80. A significant blight on our little city and so we're grateful for her work.
Thank you.
I have a question, you mentioned beavers. I have a, some land on the river across from Spencer's and I have a big bend in the river. I saw something go in the water, do you think it could have been a muskrat or a beaver or?
Well, we had both nutria and beavers and otters actually. So it could have been any one of those.
And then what I'm also doing is pulling out all the water hyacinth, that's a very nuisance plant. So whenever you see that blooming, please, please remove it from the river.
I neglected to mention, April 23rd is also the citywide cleanup day from 8 to noon. So if we could be sure to spread the word, we've been trying to spread the word because last year we did it so quickly that some people felt like they weren't informed. So it was in the newsletter last month and we'll put it in again this month.
Mayor, I forgot, I forgot to book your thing.
Well, I was gonna tell Joy, thank you. Thank you very much, yes.
I forgot to add, I talked to Donald, the road maintenance supervisor in Lockhart and we're still scheduled for the overlay on Lockhart Street. He said, I talked to him last week, so he said two to three weeks, so it's just like he's on schedule for the end of this month, end of this month, something like that. He said depends on the, said the asphalt plant is up and running and the weather holds like it is, we should be able to have that thing done. So that's good news for the city. And that process would probably only take a few days to do the overlay, so there won't be a big traffic jam situation.
Okay, thank you, thank you for giving us that information. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business.
I was gonna say one thing about the parks.
Yes.
We had, thanks Sonia and Carlton Carl for getting the LCR A Bluebonnet grant, a thousand dollar grant for purchasing trees in the park. So we planted two 30-gallon live oak trees, one Schumard red oak and a chink of an oak. We also mulched around all those new trees and we mulched around the other trees. Also, we got the playground and also thanks to Mayor for showing up and Jan for bringing some tools. But they weeded out the children's playground area in the mulch and the swing set. So all the weeds have been removed, thanks so much. And I encourage anyone as a citizen, whenever you see an overflowing garbage can or garbage on any of our parks to have an extra trash bag in your car and pick up any kind of trash whenever you see it, I appreciate that, of course. And I will be watering these trees as frequently as is needed since they're new planting. So stop by and see our, see our new trees in the park, it looks very good, thank you.
Sam, and you didn't, you need to toot your own horn because you got all the mulch. So toot, toot for you, you know, thank you. I mean, you know, you always just do so much for our parks and I, I really appreciate it, so.
Yeah, I, I drove to New Bronfels Landscape Spine, got a yard of this better mulch and then I got another truckload of the mulch since I had a tree cut. And then also again, want to thank Sean McDonald, a friend of the parks who dug the holes for the tree with his backhoe, so.
Thank you, Sam, I didn't mean to skip over you. It was a nice day, it was very pleasant and the people from LCR A were really wonderful. Okay, so we're gonna move on to new business and the selection of the chief of police. It was a long process and it was very interesting and informative and there were lots of ups and downs in the last few months as we went to select the police chief. And this last Saturday, we met on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock for two hours and we finally made a selection and our selection is our interim police chief, Tommy Ward.
I believe you, so this appointment, I think it's subject to confirmation from council still. That point was not handled.
So I have appointed.
There you go.
I, I have appointed Tommy Ward to be our full-time police chief. And do we have a motion?
I have a motion that we appoint Tommy Ward as the police chief.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Do you want to just briefly mention how you came to that conclusion or what you like about him or anything?
It was a difficult, all three candidates were so highly qualified and we were very fortunate. I think a lot of the public got to meet the candidates the Saturday before and we spent three, four hours, I guess it was four hours, over at the Feed Barn and anybody who wanted to meet them did come by and we asked people to make notes on cards and then we sorted those cards out and looked at all the comments and they were very even. There were four positive comments for CCG Walwin. There were five for Jimmy Ma, Macon and then there were eight for Tommy Ward. And so we just, we feel very fortunate that we have, have such a good selection and we just are feeling that this is a really positive time for our city. So if there is no more discussion on this.
Well, I was gonna come in and just say one thing, you, you were back and forth and we were all thinking about this so much, but you were deciding. deciding what was best for the city and, and that someone can really start working now and hire people and, and you.
We've been leading on the county pretty heavy to help with support. Although our interim chief has been out there policing the roads on weekends and evenings. So we have had some coverage. It's, it's, you know, it's time to move forward. And so he's been here, he knows a lot of people. And we just felt that, that it would take another two to three months to get somebody who didn't know the city as well as Tommy did. So that's kind of what kind of pushes over the edge, the fact that we had more positive comments from the public for Tommy Ward and that we really need to get going and hire one or two more officers and just really start policing our city full-time.
I have, I have some items that I would like to say. So whenever you're saying, I mean, the decision, basically, it was a tie decision and the mayor is deciding who to appoint from our discussions that we had. Another thing that I wanted to say is I'm, I'm very concerned because I have the utmost respect for you. What I'm about to say has nothing to do with the caliber of man or employee. You're a very dedicated employee to your job with the state. And I mean, you know, we're, we, we are so blessed to have had you here and, and going to have you here. But I have concerns, just like with having two full-time jobs, two forty-hour weeks, full-time jobs. I know that I've been assured that, that, you know, that you could do it. But just as a physical human being with well-being and, you know, things that you have to do, I, I mean, I just don't see how eighty hours a week is feasible for a human to thrive. Well, maybe it's because I only have one job and, you know, that's how it's done. But, you know, my whole concerns and what I've heard, you know, some citizens stating also, it's just that I, I heard that, you know, it could take longer, it could take two more months. But yet those are the candidates that our interview panel put forward through. So it taking two more months or three more months wasn't a news flash when our hiring panel are the ones who chose those candidates. So, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that on record, I'm concerned that our full-time chief of police has another full-time job with the state. I believe it's over three thousand employees, right? Three thousand, six, about three thousand employees. So, I mean, his work ethic, his record of that caliber speaks for himself. Definitely he will be in my prayers, also for the citizens of Martindale. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure to, to voice that. And so that way it was on record.
Yes. You know, I mean, I, I worked here for two and a half years before and with the exact same job. And no one said, well, I, I believe people on the council at the same time, some of these people were the same council members. I did it for two and a half years before, but without any problems whatsoever.
Uh-huh. But you weren't police chief then?
But I was a police officer and doing a lot of things nights and weekends.
Okay, I mean, and I understand that, but just like the man that was killed on Highway eighty, when I got the call that the judge had pronounced them, you know, deceased, whenever I spoke to the mayor, she said that you were answering the call along there with the officers in D P S. So, I mean, and, and I hear you, you worked all night the night before. That's, you know, it's a lot. And then you have a job the next day. So I get it, you know? And that's just the type of caliber the person you are. So just thank you.
The misconception is the county does not work tracks, traffic crashes even. The sheriff's department does not work crashes. Highway Patrol works crashes. And that's their job. So then the experts in fatalities, I would call them, if I was standing right there, I'd have called.
I understand.
Okay, so it was a difficult decision. We were here for two hours Saturday morning. With all things being equal, it did tip a little bit more towards Mr. Chief Ward. And so we are giving the job to Ms., to Chief Ward, and I'm very happy about that. So if there are no more comments, we'll go ahead and vote. And so since Councilman McClabb has made the motion and Councilman Clinton has seconded the motion, I will ask Jan, what is your vote?
Yes.
And Sonia, what?
I'm gonna no.
Okay, so the motion carries and Chief Ward is our, our chief of police. And the judge is here to swear him in.
Okay.
Tommy Ward.
Tommy Ward. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I fully execute.
That I will fully execute.
The duties of the office of chief of police.
The duties of office of chief of police.
Of the city of Martindale.
Of the city of Martindale.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
Okay.
Chief? Sign your name.
Signature. Okay, we'll move on to Adrian's presentation.
Whatever you wanna do.
It's your stage, Adrian, wherever you're most comfortable.
So on slide two, this is kind of a brief rundown of what we'll be addressing. And so we're gonna look at some examples from San Marcos and here at Martindale, the minutes we've done in the past few years. This is my fifth day as, in the office as a city clerk. So this is what I observed. And so I'm gonna show the current state of how we are doing on minutes and correspondence of section five-five-one point zero-two-one of Local Government Code. And then how we can address the current state of our minutes and recordings. Granted, this meeting is being recorded, so. And how to go about publishing those recordings and things to look out for and possible revision of the ordinance. So on slide three, on the agenda packet, it's on there. So this is Martindale Minutes. So Agenda, it's on the left, discussing the matter of the police chief. You can receive a small text here. But on the right is the minutes and the whole kind of video summary of what went on that meeting in December of last year. On the next slide, you'll see San Marcos, and this is one agenda item, and it just has the for and against. And it's the motions made by council members in San Marcos. And so for us to, on the next slide, this is how we're doing our minutes. Then that might be why.
Real quick, yeah, so that kind of sets a context for the rest of the conversation. So right now, we're keeping very detailed minutes as required, as well, at least understanding what the requirement is, providing the discussions as it relates to the policymaking process along with the votes. Other cities provide, as, as he's example, use San Marcos as an example, simple votes on those items. And, and we'll get to how they're doing that through video in a second. But that, that's a key feature that we're trying to address.
Right. And thank you. So right now, as of twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-one, granted the pandemic probably had some influence and short staff, and we are behind about twenty-four, twenty-five sets of minutes. Each meeting goes about two hours. So that's about fifty hours of recordings and then plus labor, given each item has a description. And so I have a proposal of how we can become compliant with Local Government Code and still provide minutes.
Do you listen to the recordings or do you watch the Zoom meetings? How, how are you gonna accomplish that?
And so we do have recordings. So right now, this meeting's been recorded. It's had the camera if you like. And the, so we wait and listen, we go back. And if we hear, if someone said something unclear, we have to go back and listen carefully and try to get the spirit of the meeting in writing. And so there would be a, to do interpretation of whoever the city clerk is. And that's how we do our minutes. That's all, all our, that summary you provide is just our interpretation of the context of the meeting and what each item is.
Well, think about it, if you're, as he's mentioned, it's forty-eight, forty-eight hours of audio, visual, visual to listen through, read through, pause, write the summary, listen to it again, make sure it's accurate, move on to the next. So really, this backlog is probably hundreds of hours of work. And we've, we've attacked it many ways. Dedicated our prior city clerk to work it before he was interim city clerk. He was helping writing minutes. We've utilized court clerk to help catch up on minutes. It is, it is a big elephant to chew one at a time. So.
Especially like this last month when we had a meeting every Tuesday.
Yeah, sometimes twice a week. So.
And so on the next slide, I'm gonna go over to section five-five-one point zero-two-one of Local Government Code. It says that minutes or recordings of an open meeting is required. Now, if you see section five-five-one point one-twenty-eight about internet broadcasting, that only really applies to cities with above fifty thousand population who have to make a recording. We're not in that level. However, we do have recordings. So just because we have recordings doesn't mean we have to do this. But we are able to either, a government body shall prepare and keep minutes or make a recording of each meeting. Usually cities about of our capacity cannot do that because of how much this equipment costs. But thanks to ARPA and all that stuff, we were able to get the equipment. And so, and the next slide will show that we can create a YouTube channel uploading our videos of our recordings. And it would still be compliant. We would keep up, if we publish these videos to YouTube, which many, many other cities have, we'll be compliant with the chapter five-five-one, and we could put them in our city webpage as well. This shouldn't cost us anything.
So there's no storage fee?
No.
On YouTube? Yeah.
No. And so on the next slide.
Real, real quick on that topic, though. We are two weeks away from needing to renew our contract for our Zoom. And we have exceeded our video cloud storage by like almost a hundred gigabytes. And we're at risk of losing that data if they were to crack down and reset us back at our contracted limit. And in order to accommodate just the storage capacity that we already have, be one thousand six hundred dollars, just to maintain the views we have. If we wanted to go towards increased capacity in our cloud storage that would accommodate future meetings, we're looking at six thousand dollars. So this is also an alternative way to keep ours to, what's that?
It's per year.
Yeah, that was per year. That's a, that's an annual cost that I quoted.
We have to have all the meetings on, available to the public at any. Can't store on the external drive.
So we, right now, we have, we have the ability to download off of Zoom and store those video files. How those video files are five gigabytes each and store, and it takes probably like six to eight hours to transfer files of that size onto our network drive and it.
Really? I'll wait.
Um, it, it, it takes about five or six hours to transfer files. And so that's each video. And so we've, we've accumulated, you know, fifty-some-odd videos. And we've tried moving those files. And you, you can't get any work done with that way. So it's, and we've looked into using our Civic Plus website, worked with them on what it would cost to get our, a media upgrade. And it's starting at about ten thousand dollars a year. And we asked them, you know, can we, is there another option that we could use? No, there, and our storage limits for our document folders on there is like twenty-five gigabytes or something like that. So we, we quickly exceed our storage capacity on our website as well. So YouTube is also a way for us to be able to archive that video in a least-cost method.
Yes. I mean, how many do we have to have available for the public?
We don't have to have them available for the public at all. Right now, we don't publish those videos. They're, they can be made available under a free or open records request. But we do not publish those currently. And the, the option that he was discussing on the previous slide, under the requirements of us to document the, the, under the meeting, we either have minutes or a recording. The proposal that he's describing is shifting to a much more slimmed-down minutes, making reference to a recording. And on this slide, if you look at the bottom left, that would be a table similar to what we would do on our website, where people will click a link and access the video recording that was posted by YouTube.
And how many of those, how many? Like on Caldwell, if you go to the Caldwell County page here, they have all of their meetings on, online, like you could go back and they have a whole slew of them. And then you just pick the meeting that you wanna go to. It has the agenda items. You click on the agenda item and it takes you straight to that video where it starts from those minutes. And they just have everything stored there on there.
Some of those capabilities, timestamping that might be, we're looking into how we do that. We might just make mention of the timestamp in the minutes so that people can quickly move their cursor and fast-forward in YouTube. The, the ability to click on agenda item and those things through our website, that's where the ten thousand-plus cost would, for that type of feature.
Have you looked at the Caldwell County one?
Yes, and so I was gonna propose that in the next two slides, I believe.
Quick, quick, quick question. Are you, are you going to, so you're going to reduce the actual writing of minutes, name description verbally?
Yes, and so people will refer to what you guys are saying in person.
Only thing that would concern me, I know in my past career, minutes were very important because that's what people agreed upon. I mean, if it's, if it's the same old thing, but if we got a really important issue, I think it, I think it needs to be, or it needs to be in written form. If it's something.
The, the, the possibility of that written form being more accurate than the recording of the actual event, I think are pretty slim. You have more accurate reference to watching the video of that discussion than we would summarizing it in a minute.
But, but, but what Adrian's going to propose is exactly what you're saying. It would be a slimmed-down, it would have all the motions, who makes the motions and, and everything. Isn't that correct, Dave?
Yes. So this would give us time to, to provide our minutes and recordings in a timely matter and still give us time to actually make the minutes happen.
I totally agree. I totally, what you're both saying, though, I'm just saying, if there's, only thing I could say, like, for example, in my last career, I would, I would cut and paste, for example, I had, I had a report, I'd say, hey, this, this particular, this issue was discussed on, you know, August fifth, city council meeting, I don't know, five or whatever. You can cut and paste and actually have the, the written statement. Now, yeah, what I'm saying is something that's critical, not the everyday thing, something we're changing zoning or we're changing, something that's big, you know? I don't, I don't think that in there, if that makes any sense what I'm saying.
So in approving minutes, you can, might make that comment, say, I need this to be stated at.
Okay.
So and so that I need my statement to be said or in this proposal of minutes.
We could do that. He's exactly right. We could add to it.
We get it. I don't register, you're like, eh.
We could do that. But there, there's nothing that would prevent us from doing that. My recommendation would be that we, our minutes would be, instead of looking like they are today, would look like an example of San Marcos where agenda item for against, and then that would be, it would just record the vote. If there's other discussion, that's available through the recording.
Which someone could get from an Open Meetings Act?
Well, today they could get it from Opens Meeting Act tomorrow, figuratively tomorrow. If this, if the council chooses to make action on this tonight, what we do is we provide a link to the YouTube video.
I, I think for me, I mean, I've, I've been, I've been on council, I've been here for a while, but I just, it would, it's very rare that I would, I mean, if there was something really critical that I would request it, that's being lied about, that would be, it's a little bit rare.
Just how you guess, just how you guess of accept minutes, you revise them, see, I don't really like this. This didn't accurately describe what I was trying to get across. You could just return back in the minutes that we proposed. However, the recordings is what you guys are saying. And so the recordings was, is meant for people who missed a council meeting or really need to understand or visit what is going on in the council meeting. And so I don't say you don't have a, a say in much of what happened with the police chief, but you really care about the river. And so you can skip the police chief conversation and go back to the recordings and it'll show all things river and it'll be searchable on our city's webpage and our search function.
So that's my question. So, I mean, I can, I can probably count on my one hand how many times I would have requested it in writing. If I had something very critical, I'd say, could you please put that in writing?
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
But I think.
It'd be very rare.
I think all of the videos, you could do the voice to text anyway, and exactly what you're saying is gonna be printed.
YouTube does generate closed, closed captions. However, it's not, it's AI, it's very buggy. You won't, you might, the word of water might be said differently from someone from New Jersey, because it's water. And so that might be misgenerated. So our.
Texas accents are awful.
Also different.
I'm gonna say, for example, I've got a, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Golly.
How would that come out?
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. I'm just saying, I, for example, if I had a, if I was sent an email, I had some issue, and there's a huge issue for me, I'd say, hey, as referred to in the minutes from blah, 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 and you could say, here it is in the written statement, instead of going check the recording of this, blah, blah, blah. I'm just saying, very, for me personally, it'd be very extremely rare that I'd ever request that. So that's, that's just my two cents for it.
And so just like on this slide, it shows agenda and, and video would also have minutes. And so you notice how on the third line, it doesn't have the agenda ready. That would be until it's proposed, until we, it's accepted by city council and yes, we accept these minutes. And it's not until every single council member agrees of what statement should be put on there. Just like we said, that, like, I need this on the record. That'll be put onto, that'll be published when it's ready and to their liking. However, this conversation is more about requesting permission to upload our videos somewhere. And so they're available online. And so the way it would be done is a, the visitor to a website would click the video and it'll put them to a new link, a new specific web address from our city webpage. Someone can just share it and it'll be, have the agenda and the code to the video. So that's the use, that's the, that's my side where I would code in that video address and all that. And on the next slide, you'll see, you can just press the video and it'll start playing. That's how it's gonna look like to the consumer, meeting type, public hearing, or is it a regular council meeting, special council, special, a regular council meeting, and then have the meeting date. And just like our document is the twenty twenty two, zero four, zero five. And so if you press the video, it'll start playing. It should start playing at least. But you know how it is with, no? Well, it should start playing. It worked on my end of my computer. And so on the next slide, so this is how it's gonna be, it's gonna describe the type of meeting it is, then the year, month, date. The city, the proposed city YouTube channel, I suggest is just City of Martindale hyphen YouTube channel. And this would be our city recognized YouTube channel. And city clerk would manage the uploads and add timestamps to the agenda and actions. On the right side, if you press the blue text, it would lead you exactly to that point. This is on YouTube's website, not on the city's. But you could also follow the URL of, from our website to YouTube, which would direct you to the description. And the videos would be embedded to our city's webpage on the following slide. This is the city of Pasadena, who posts all their city council meetings. On the following side is a description from Plano and who puts links their agenda on the YouTube description if someone or just someone will cross it. And then, again, I reiterate the timestamps. So ours would have the agenda, link to our agenda, and then below in the description you'll see item one A, it's going to be the mayor's report, and then item one A, then it's gonna say action was taken on so and so.
So in the future, if we do go to the YouTube channel process, would the initiation of that or the meeting starting, would it be a Zoom link initially or would it be a YouTube link?
It would be YouTube link.
YouTube link. So we'll, we'll. Doing away with Zoom, basically?
No.
No.
We're getting the recordings from Zoom.
There, there might be, we'll look into see what, I forget what the acronym stands for, APIs, basically a way to, to live stream off of Zoom. I know you can live stream off of Zoom onto Facebook if we had a Facebook page. I don't know what APIs exist between Zoom and like a YouTube live type of feed. But as Adrian referenced, that's not a requirement of us on our, on our state law like it is for other larger cities where they are required to provide a live stream. For us, we would still publish unless we're able to figure out that live stream capability and it's, you know, a pretty easy thing to do. The proposal tonight is just for post, hosting and publishing the recordings, not a, not necessarily live stream. So you still use the link.
Question. I know we, in the past, we only had voice recordings. What did we do to those?
They're still around or actually saved on our computers. And you can just save a YouTube video, but just it would have a, a picture instead with no visuals.
We'd probably start with what's on video.
Yes.
And, and just like Jared, there's a timeframe that we had to work on pulling out videos so we have them saved and not lost potentially.
So you think during preview, oh, I have one last question. Do you think during the meetings of twenty or twenty twenty one, where we had twenty one meetings that were not, had minutes recorded? Is it that it's so much to type during the course of the meeting that it's hard to keep up with it? Do you think that was the factor of not accomplishing that task?
If we did it the way San Marcos did it with a much lean, more lean content, not a problem, I have it here ready right now with the motions we've made this meeting so far. But if you want to get the spirit and the context of the meeting and being able to share what we're doing here, you're gonna have to give us some time to, to really, like my client got, said, to write it down of the spirit of our meetings and to get the real, what everybody's saying and the context about how are everybody's stances.
Are we accepting questions from the public? I think someone from the public had a question.
I just want to follow up on that.
Yes.
So this is a new city clerk in his role, seeing a problem, looking to solve. I don't want to get into too much why or how comes past city clerks didn't do.
No, no, I, I, I know that it's, it's a lot to sit there and type all that down. No, nobody can do that unless they type a hundred and fifty words a minute or, or whatever. No, I was just seeing what the, what the process was.
Process wasn't a good process. This is a much better process.
Yes.
There was a, if the council wants to entertain question, we can.
She, I think she had a question.
Ms. McGovern, as a citizen, I would choose anything that can give the information that happens in the meeting to the public as soon as possible. However, that is, it makes the city more transparent what's going on.
That's my feeling.
Thank you. I finish things.
Mayor Jim?
Oh, yes, Ms. Harper.
Yeah, not everybody in Marquise has access, computer access. And in fact, the meeting tonight wasn't even, the agenda was not posted on the website until yesterday, about seventy two hours. Okay, I'm old school. I don't do YouTube, I don't do Facebook and some of those stuff. It's a big waste of time. I'm gonna find the agenda, because that's what I'm doing, I want to go to the San Marcos meeting, I want to go to Martindale. There's a lot of agenda on there. Okay, are you changing the main city website? Because that's why I go to it for the agenda.
We'll likely be making improvements as, as we develop a web page that's more dedicated. Right now, if you go to our city website and look up agendas, it's gonna direct you to basically a document folder structure. We prefer to get a cleaner webpage interface. So it's something more like that, that list where you, it's, it's accessible through links instead of hunting and pecking through document folders and other things. So you'll likely see some improvements there.
All the city web pages are covered. Waiting for it to, there's a place for agenda, minutes, notices. You don't need those other two, just the agenda.
Yes, you will still have it in writing for you to be able to click on.
And so. So the general YouTube conditions, so as long as we don't break any following rules that YouTube proposes, such as impersonating someone, another YouTube channel or another creator or put acts of violence or without, at least, no, do not be obscene, no obscenities, which I don't think happens often in council meetings. And if, in the case that it does happen, which it happened about a year and a half ago, that would not be uploaded because we just couldn't, or we would have to edit out that section. And we would just have to fast track those minutes to be, to follow our, to be compliant with our Opens Meetings Act in a timely manner. But most of these recordings would be posted within the next day or two. And it will give us still time to work on actual minutes while providing the information in a timely manner.
So what he's saying is we're not doing away with written minutes. We're gonna do both, but by putting the videos online, people will have quicker access to the minutes. And we'll still have written minutes, they would just be pared down a little bit.
Wait, I, I like to suggest, I mean, this.
No, no, that's, that's why it's council.
What we used to do when I was, when I was working, a lot of times, you'd make your minutes, like if I make a statement, like I had this big issue, if, if it would be acceptable or I think it'd be legal, if I wrote the minutes, so this is what I said and give it to you, would that be kosher or not?
I, I, I don't know why it would be necessary.
I'm saying, I'm just saying, it's an extremely important issue, you want to make sure that you're quoted.
It's recorded.
What I'm saying is, but like I said earlier, I'm, I'm all for this, but in certain circumstances, I, I, I won't have.
Would you, would you want to, would it be, would the purpose be to amend statements of, for the record?
It would be, no, it'd be for, for somebody if they were writing a report or writing a report on this issue and they, you know, they, you want to go and say, well, check the minutes, videos, have theirs quote, this was the, the statement in the minutes.
So, yeah, if we went to like written reports, like lots of cities, what they'll do here, I think it's a very collaborative atmosphere and the city councils conducted it this way, where the mayor's report, city minister's report, court report, police report, boards of commissions reports are all provided orally. If the city council chose to make those written reports and included as part of like a consent item, agenda item, where you provided the written report and then you get to the agenda item, under consent, approved, submitted reports. And then they're, they're not discussed or those reports would still be kept as part of the official record of the meeting because they're, what was approved as part of the city council action, they'd likely just be documentation. So if that's what you're referencing.
I, I think also technically, like if you wanted to, or any city council member wanted to, you could do your own city council Facebook page. And then what you say on there, that's your record of what happened. You just can't delete anything because you're using it in an official capacity. But you would be able to post your videos on there, you would be able to post your links on there, you could put whatever you type on there, you're tying it to your city role.
I'm like Ms. Harper, I'm not a big Facebooker.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, I won't let it go.
If it's that important, you have a written prepared statement and.
It's gonna be extremely rare. It's gonna be extremely rare.
We'll have it written and prepared at a time.
Looking to work through that, so we're going, we're going also.
And a good thing about this, it holds everybody kind of before they say, you know, like my council member said this or is talking about this. And sometimes, you know, you can't get the same spirit of it or writing can't be equally said as an inspiring moment that a council member can say something, you know?
But, yeah, if, if there's a, a debate, policy debate on things, sometimes it's hard to capture the nuance of that conversation system. Having a recording better captures those nuances.
And so if a council member decides to say, for the record, that means, you know, they can listen to, someone's gonna listen to that instead of having it being written down, that so and so said this. But if a council member says, for the record, they're highlighting the next phrase they're about to say or statement.
We got a deal, buddy. All right.
There's somebody else has a question.
Yes.
I just want to mention that if you're using the city of San Marcos as an example on the minutes, you're missing two crucial pieces. They also have transparency guidelines that kind of govern what goes on the minutes, which is why they've gone to verbatim, that they've gone away from verbatim minutes. The other thing is that probably two thousand, two thousand eight, they get away with council reports because they are, they're too broad. They're not condensed to be within a, a, a council agenda because they're difficult to agendize. And that was, that actually came from a recommendation from the city attorney.
Were you once the mayor of San Marcos?
Yes, sir.
During, during what years?
Two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen was on the council, two thousand fourteen, two thousand eight. I actually cracked those boards.
Wow, thank you.
The big.
But his most important job was as a volunteer at the library.
Some of that's related to home, home rule charters, where general law, but those sort of guidelines, if the city council want to consider, just to, to further define those rules, if you wanted to do that. It's, it's a, you know, ordinance or resolution that you guys could do.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And so these are the big points that YouTube is kind of big on right now, given the recent years. The first, YouTube does give any YouTube channel three strikes, but they also have the rights to appeal. Um, the first, YouTube does give, uh, any YouTube channel three strikes, but they also have the rights to appeal. So you get one warning, three strikes. And if you violate any of the rules that were before mentioned are going to be mentioned. Um, you, we might have to make a claim saying that, no, we did not falsely report on an issue. Or that, no, this is not an obscene, uh, an obscene issue.
This comes in.
These will be live on YouTube?
No, no, so what, what, what he's getting at is YouTube, YouTube, if you post a video on YouTube, it has certain guidelines and rules. Think, think of it as. It is a nationally sensitive topic, um, between the political parties regarding the use of social media. And, um, what some describe as censorship. So. Here is where YouTube has, um, rules regarding content that's posted relating to misinformation, elections, misinformation. Covid nineteen, vaccine information. We would never, the city council, I cannot foresee a situation where we, the city council break these rules. Or it could, or it has posed issues for cities in the past is an open comments, public comments. So if somebody in public comments says, you know, Covid nineteen is a Chinese hoax, something crazy like that. Well, is it a possibility that YouTube highlights that, sanctions it? And now, you know, we're, we're getting warnings and three strikes and whatever. So, um, we'll get into how we would handle it further on, but that's the, the context of this discussion.
And so one would be misinformation, so saying that, uh. That Dermex is all you need to clean a cut or it's all you need, uh, or Dermex is a great. Uh, um, spice for your food, it's, it's harmful, so you shouldn't promote things like that. Then saying that, oh, the census is not real or doesn't, you're saying, don't do the census because it's just a bunch of, of. Magic stuff that doesn't exist and so, or saying that, uh. The being manipulated contents, we wouldn't really be doing that too much since we've, those are council meetings. And then misinformed content, we'll be saying that this video of. Let's say in the Ukraine is something from World War Two and is not relevant today. That's stuff we shouldn't be putting on YouTube or claiming. And so that probably won't happen. Um, this one is a little bit more sensitive to Martindo and. Or at least just being as a government in general, any, any city has to be aware is that do not tell, purposely tell. The public that, oh yeah, election day is on June, not in May, so lying about the elections or how to vote. Um, or the legitimacy of a candidate. Really just messing with the democratic process, uh, promoting it purposely to. To manipulate the audience. Next slide, and the next slide is a quick.
Yeah, we'll.
But we don't need to. Then the Covid nineteen medical misinformation saying that, um. Cactus is a great remedy for, uh, beating Covid nineteen and you'll be good in one day. So basically, anything that really goes against, uh, the World Health Organization. And promoting false information or any slander of any kind towards Covid nineteen that isn't already kind of discussed. Uh, would cause us, give us a strike or a warning. Next slide, and then also vaccine misinformation saying the vaccines don't work or that any vaccine would give you. Purple hair or something crazy. Saying anything wrong about vaccines would be on a council meeting that's going to be recorded on YouTube. Would give us the penalty.
So what we would likely do is, um, Adrian and I were discussing this. We can provide, well, as I'm sharing screen, that like this, what's on the screens in here is it was also being shared. With, uh, members of the community who are participating being Zoom. So what we would likely do is include a disclaimer or some, on a slide, title slide during public comments. That would protect us from being potentially liable for something that's said in a, in an open, uh, public setting. By a member of the public or what have. Want to make sure that it's a risk when you're using YouTube. If we expect to comply with state law by using YouTube and then YouTube goes and removes a video of ours, then we're not complying with state law. Um, that's kind of what we want to bring up, so you're aware of what could.
So will the city council need to approve all the videos?
No. No, no, that, that. No, no, no. No, 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 I, that's not.
And so these are possible revisions of the ordinances that we currently have that address minutes. And most of these would just say, and recordings. So, um, the city manager or city administrator is responsible for the efficient management of all city records. Including city council minutes and recordings, which would be the, an addition to the change. And there's chapter thirty-one, oh, three, section four C, um, which require that and recordings. Again, this is all up to council for wanting to or not wanting to make amends to the ordinances.
Yeah, so if you, if the council tonight, uh, decides to take action, um, what we would do is come back in a future meeting. With those ordinance changes, but he, he's, he's giving you a, a preview of what that would look like.
Um, and also city clerk, same thing, including that will be accordance with state law and city ordinances. Including city council minutes and recordings. Uh, next one would also be and recordings, and recordings, and recordings, and recordings. Um, the next one would be or recordings. So this one is on accessories, structures. That if we are to deny a permission for something, that we would use minutes or go back to the recording. And that will be our justification for why denying a certain, uh, decision. And so an ordinance will look something to the effect of the creation of a city. Creation of a city recognized YouTube channel named as City of Martindale YouTube channel, which is the channel name. Uh, whereas all recorded city council meetings and commissions, public meetings be recorded and published on the city's official YouTube channel.
What we can do for tonight is, um, consider this as a, um, action item. And then we'll begin this process and then, uh. Present the, the ordinance changes accordingly, so. Well, the, the, the requested motion is, uh, to allow the city to create. And as it says here. Yep.
All right, I make a motion to approve, uh, fifteen minutes and recordings of open, um, meetings. For, I guess, the city clerk.
Yeah, so.
City manager.
Yeah, this, I, I would, I would just, you know.
If you read that.
All right, I propose a creation of a city organized YouTube channel named as City of Martindale, the YouTube channel. Whereas by recording city council meetings and commissions, uh, public meetings be recorded and published. Into the city's official YouTube channel.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mike, how do you vote?
I guess.
And Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. Good job, Adrian.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much for working on the presentation and compiling that. That was very easy to, uh, comprehend.
And it's gonna be a nice little agreement.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I wanna add something.
Oh, yes.
Your agenda.
That's not on the agenda.
You know.
Okay.
Virginia Parker has requested, uh, to do a, uh, a presentation in front of council on impervious cover. So I'd like to have that as a, as a discussion only. A review of our, uh, current ordinances regarding impervious cover. And have the speaker, I guess she's part of the.
Could be a presentation.
She, she's part of the, uh, River Advisory Committee, so thank you for the. She did request that.
Okay, is there any other items people would like to discuss?
Well, I think we.
Well, I allow my.
We need to discuss, and you, you and I have discussed about the maintenance of the parks for the summertime.
And, um, I know I had requested for an item to be on the agenda about a citizen. And a, uh, payment that was made and I know you wrote it down, but it was never added as an agenda item. I'm wondering just.
We are addressing that, we're not preparing that at this point.
So it can't be placed on the agenda?
I've put it on the list, but.
Uh, I mean, you know, just to be able to ask questions, I mean, cause I don't know.
Okay, uh, it, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight eleven on April fifth.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, will you say aye? Thank you.